Let's all rise for the political allegiance. I.
Let's do the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator.
Here.
Trustee Kenny.
Present.
Trustee McDonald. Trustee Whitehouse.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson.
Here.
Mayor Hammond.
Here. All right, it looks like we got a presentation.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Bert McCaffrey, past chairman of the planning commission for the last five or six years. You know, one found out one thing, if you stay on a board long enough in the town of Wellington, you get an opportunity to do what I get to do tonight, which is make a presentation to the board members that are going off the board of the town of trustees. Mayor Troy Hammond, Wyatt Knutson, John Jerome, and Tim Whitehouse. They called me this afternoon about two o'clock, said, would you be willing to do a presentation for these guys? We can't find anybody that'll say anything good about them. Could you make something up? Sure, I can do that. My great grandmother always told me, if you can't say anything nice, don't say anything. However, there's always a however in life. I can say a lot of good things about these guys. I've known Wyatt probably the longest of all you guys. He's been on the board for a long time. He's done a lot of good things. As Wyatt said in some of the presentations earlier this year, he's kind of quiet, sits back, doesn't say much. Then he gets in his head what he knows is right to do, and he does it, and that's how he votes. And I always admired that about Wyatt. John Jerome, John's not here, so I'm not going to crush him too bad. We'll just say John was dedicated for six years, I believe, or so, on the board. So thank you for your service, John. Tim Whitehouse, what can I say? Guy wears clothes like nobody I've ever seen. Whether it's a golf course or a meeting or whatever, he's got plenty of pockets to hold just about anything you want. Tim puts his heart and soul into every one of these meetings. He's been on the planning commission with me for many years. He reads everything more than once, more than twice, more than three times, and he understands exactly what he's reading. And then what about Troy Hammond? Mayor Troy Hammond, four years. He came to my office back before he ran the first time, and said, Bert, this is what I want to do. What do you think? Am I crazy? And I said, yes, you are crazy. And four years later, I think he agrees with it. But he did a heck of a job. He's worked really hard. He's always studied everything, and everybody really enjoyed it. So I just want to give these guys a great big hand for the work they've done the last six, eight, well, how many years it's been. Thank you, guys. You did a great job.
Now we have, now we have something here for you.
Mayor, since you had to put in more time, be careful, that'll fall off of there.
We got three minutes here.
This is why the weight's on the button, because this is going to fall over.
I like it. I like it.
Time's up.
That is cool.
We'll just give this a very good chance. Okay, thank you. All right, and John, we can get John's later.
That's a very, very appropriate. All right. This is time for outgoing elected officials to say anything, if you'd like. How about you, sir?
So really enjoyed being on here. Learned a lot about the town, learned a lot about the people. I'm glad I could serve my six-year term, or six, six years, and look forward to working with the new staff, new trustees, new mayor, and see what we can do with this town.
How about you, sir?
You guys probably done listened to me after all this time. I just want to say that the last two years have been really hard in our community and stressed, uncertainty, the pandemic, and water and sewer rates, to name a few things. But I really believe the current board set a strong foundation for Wellington's future. It hasn't been easy, but Wellington's rounding the corner, and I think we're ahead of the curve. I mean, what's going to happen is you're going to find other communities out there are going to run into what we ran into, and we're in better shape than most. So I really want to thank the board for the hard work. The last couple of years have been kind of like a meat grinder. And we got it through, got through with it, and I'm, you know, proud of what we've done. I think we worked really hard. I know, I know we made some tough decisions that weren't easy on us and certainly weren't easy on our residents. But I think the town has demonstrated a level of resilience that I think is really important moving forward. And, you know, I want to thank the residents for their engagement. You've showed up to really dull meetings to let your opinions be known, and I think your input allowed the board to make better decisions and create better policies. So I want to say thank you for that, and I ask you to stay engaged and speak your minds. It's really important. We need that. So I mean, the last election saw participation go from 20 to 30%. Someone said, that's a 10% increase. No, that's a 50% increase. That's engagement. So keep it up. Be here. These, these people, they need you. So that's really important. And I also want to talk about the staff, because I'm proud and honored to have worked with the people here in this town. They're dedicated. They're the best staff this town has ever had. They've made phenomenal progress making Wellington a modern town, providing better services, better amenities. And they did this all during the pandemic, pandemic, and will continue to do this. I mean, the town must always keep functioning. So, and I would like to congratulate Kyler Shosse, the mayor, Brian Mason, Sherrell Teetz, and David Wigan. Yeah, I mean, I mean that heartfelt that you guys are accepting the burden of the leadership. I'm sure there'll be some difficult decisions to make moving forward. Relying on the staff, they are your allies. They know this stuff better than you can ever know it. So, and I'm confident you'll put your hearts into it, and everybody in town is counting on you. So I wish you congratulations and, you know, all the luck moving forward.
Thank you, trustee Whitehouse.
Too many words.
Covered all the bases as usual. Appreciate it. Couple of quick things for Brother John, who's not here tonight. I was glad to work with him when we first came on. He was very difficult to work with. But he asked some very difficult questions, and he reminds me of somebody that I know very well. And you had to have that. And, but then he got in our groove, and we did very good work here as we went forward. And we went through a lot of changes, I don't think, to Wellington. I don't think we've ever been in a state of emergency. I don't know if we've ever done that before. You have to look on that one. And it's hard to get a lot of things done that we did during all that kind of thing. And we did persevere, and we did get through, and we got to a point where I think you got something you can work with real well, and make it better and do more than what we've done. And it's been a proud moment. Not many people grow up in their hometown. I maybe know of one or a few, but not many people can say they grew up in their hometown and become mayor one day. Of course, the next mayor could probably say that, okay? Which is pretty cool, I think. And so it's been exciting. It's been fun. And my, my best moments were actually going to celebrations and helping people, you know, celebrate their causes and themselves and their accolades and that sort of thing. And that's what it was about for me, and I really enjoyed doing that. And, and there's a lot, plenty of that to go around in our town. And I've had the ability, you know, to sit here with you folks and work through the hardest things that we could ever work through and just make it happen. And no one gave up. It was, it was something. The other thing I might say is, you know, I mean, our staff is just great. You've done such a great job, all of you. And you hung in there, and you're doing just great. And it shows when I show up today, and, you know, it shows in the attitudes and what we've done, and people are proud of what they do. Is that a judge I see in the front row? I haven't had the pleasure of meeting you firsthand, but I know you very well. Thanks for be, thanks for being here. Other than that, it's been a great experience for me, and I'm leaving this in good hands. You got good trustees that have really worked hard. They know the issues, and you're going to be coming, the new trustees and the new mayor are going to come in here and acclimate and integrate and, and just do great. So it's going to be fun. And I'm looking forward to seeing what you can do and, and take this thing on. And with that, I'd like the mayor to come up for a minute, if you don't mind. I've got something for this man. No, no. Oh, right up front. Almost, almost. This says, we create ourselves as we go, and I think you're going to see that.
Oh. Oh, yeah, perfect.
That's all I got, folks.
One more, one more item that you will open up, and then those that are stepping down will remove yourselves from the dais and stand or sit or whoever, whatever you want to do, and we'll start going through the oaths of office.
What do you want me to do?
Number one, opportune, okay, number one. Now we have.
This is the oath of office.
Now, next, we have the administration of oaths of newly elected officials.
All right.
Judge Blau.
Will you step down or no?
Yes, you do.
Okay. Folks. One more. Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
So. Kayla Shosse, you're up for your oath.
You raise your right hand. After me, I, Kayla Shosse.
I, Kayla Shosse.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The laws of the state of Colorado.
The laws of the state of Colorado.
And the constitution of the state of Colorado.
And the constitution of the state of Colorado.
And I will faithfully perform.
And I will faithfully perform.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of mayor.
Of mayor.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Thank you, and congratulations. And you can take your seat at the dice.
Next, we have Brian Mason.
Right, sir, will you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Brian Mason.
I, Brian Mason.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The constitution of the state of Colorado.
The constitution of the state of Colorado.
And the laws of the state of Colorado.
And the laws of the state of Colorado.
And I will faithfully perform.
And I will faithfully, faithfully perform.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of trustee.
Of trustee.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Next is Sherrell Teetz.
All right, repeat after me, please. I, Sherrell Teetz.
I, Sherrell Teetz.
I'm sorry.
You're fine. Don't worry.
Do you swear that I will support the Constitution?
Do you swear that I will support the Constitution?
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The constitution of the state of Colorado.
The constitution of the state of Colorado.
And the laws of the state of Colorado.
And the laws of the state of Colorado.
And I will faithfully perform.
And I will faithfully perform.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of trustee.
Of trustee.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Thank you.
David Wigan.
I, David Wigan.
I, Dave Wigan.
Do you swear?
Do you swear?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
The constitution of the state of Colorado.
The constitution of the state of Colorado.
And the laws of the state of Colorado.
And the laws of the state of Colorado.
And I will faithfully perform.
And I'll faithfully perform.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of trustee.
Of trustee.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon what I'm about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Thank you, Judge Blau.
So next on the agenda is opportunity for, for newly elected officials to make a statement if they so choose, including you, Mayor Shosse.
Would anybody like to make a statement?
Um, yeah, I just want to say thank you to all the residents for coming out and voting. You know, as was mentioned earlier, bringing the turnout rate from 20 to 30% was huge, and we absolutely need your guys' engagement as far as this goes. So a big thank you to the residents and look forward to working with the staff and the new, new board up here, so.
I want to thank you for the turnout that we had, too, and don't let us forget that we're working for the residents here. You guys are number one. Thank you.
I want to thank everybody that works tireless hours to put in the effort to get everybody in Wellington where they needed to be. I'm extremely grateful, and as Dave said, we will not forget that we are working for you guys as a town. And I am really looking forward to working with staff. I've had a chance to enjoy them working with the CAC already, but I am encouraging everybody who wants to see change definitely show up and let us know if there's something that we're doing that you don't care for, because I want to hear that, too. Thanks.
I just want to thank everybody. What an amazing thing, an opportunity to be able to serve this town. You guys elected a wonderful group of people, and we have a great team up here. And I'm just really excited for the future and to see where we can do this with you guys beside us, and it's going to work out really well. And I'm, I mean, I'm elated. So thank you. Thank you very much.
So our only action item this evening is the appointment of the mayor pro tem, and I move to nominate Ashley McDonald to serve as the mayor pro tem. Can I get a second?
Second.
Are there any comments from the board?
I wanted to provide my support for Ashley as pro tem. She is dedicated to our community for a very long time. She's very consistent, very amazing with process and very fair and logical. She will serve the board in your absence whenever that might be fairly and justly, and I think she is very suitable for this position.
Thank you so much for the opportunity and for the faith to help Kayla lead this board.
Comments from the public? No? Okay. With no further comments.
I'm Reginald Westfall. I would like to see John Gator as mayor pro tem. We elected a board that tends to be conservative, and I think he's worked awfully hard, what I've seen of him. And I would like to have you consider that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you, sir, for that comment. I think you made the right choice, in my opinion. Ashley's done so much work in her past here. The one reason why we have a community park in this, in this town is because of her. She's been on this board for six years. She's put her time in. She ran for mayor, unlike everyone else, and she, she tried, and I think you did, you did great. I know you will do great, and I think you just made the right choice, hands down, bar none. And nothing against anyone else, because everybody puts their time in here and works very hard, and they're good at what they do. But I think you made a great choice.
Thank you. So having no further comments, can I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Gator.
No.
Trustee Kenny.
Yes.
Trustee Mason.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
No.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Teetz.
No.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Motion passes with a four, three vote.
Having no further business, can I get a motion to adjourn the special meeting?
So moved?
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Kenny.
Yes.
Trustee Mason.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Teetz.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
So we'll take a very quick recess so we can change out the nameplates. Mayor Shosse has told us how he wants to have this set up, so we'll go on ahead and put you in your assigned seats. We'll hand out your binders, and then we'll regroup in five minutes. Okay, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for attending.
Thank you.
We'll have to get together. We just need to. I was jealous that she got to go stop by your house while you were starting to drink. I'm like, ah.
Hopefully up on the screen. So some of the examples of success, a lot of this is related to water and wastewater. That was a huge piece of what we've worked on over the past two years, which this board had, the past board had to work on rates and things like that. This current board will also be working on rates. We're doing a rate study for water and wastewater. So that will be done in conjunction with budget. So we can roll out all, all that out together. That should be reviewed on a yearly basis, the what those rates are, to make sure that we're covering our bases and it's in, put into the budget and the citizens are well aware and have a lot of CIP projects. Just block fifty percent for our monthly newsletter, which is astronomical for municipality. You're likely to get thirty or forty percent, but we have a very engaged community. As far as internally, some, some of you saw the email I sent out today. We had a staff employee, all staff employee meeting today over at Centennial Park. Parks and Recreation brought out all their new toys and we got to try them out, which was so cool, but that's something we try to do on a quarterly basis. Get all of our staff together. We hand out awards for longevity. And you know, just tell everybody how much we appreciate them. And it was really fun today. We had, usually when I go to those things, you have fifteen percent that stay and the rest go back to work. Well, we had like eighty-five percent stay and only fifteen percent went back to work. So it was so fun to have everybody out there. I think the weather helped a lot too. The next is the twenty twenty-one community survey. The, the basic information from that survey is included in your trustee, in that handbook that I provided you. There is a lot of documentation related to that survey. So the full report is in the August tenth, twenty twenty-one trustee packet, which is available online. I can send you all the link to that. I just didn't want you to get overwhelmed with information right away because there's so much, because when Magellan does a survey, a community survey, they allow for a lot of input as far as people providing specific comments back. A lot of surveys only let you rank like A, B, or C, or one, two, and three, things like that. So because of the way they do their surveys, there is so much information to read through and a lot of comments, but I think it's always interesting to see what the, what the theme is. So people, of course, talked about water rates last year, managing growth and infrastructure, and they want restaurants, shops, and amenities. And then the top amenities requested, of course, a pool or a rec center, and I vote for that as well. Big box stores or grocery stores and more restaurants. So I, and I like the fact that a majority of the restaurants, I need water, maybe. I don't know. A majority of residents rate Wellington as a good or excellent place to live, which is seventy-one percent, and a great place to raise your family, sixty-nine percent. So staff, we will be, thank you. We will be asking to do more of these surveys on a regular basis, probably every two years, because that provides benchmarks for all of us, for the trustees and for staff and for the community to see how we're doing and, you know, for meeting the needs of the citizens, if there's areas that we're missing. Whether that's through Magellan or another company, but I think that that's something we'll be asking for in the budget. We feel it's important to, to stay on top of that. And this is the one way we can do that. Governance structure. So Wellington is a statutory town versus a home rule municipality. So statutory means they, our municipality can exercise powers granted by state statutes. A home rule municipality, which we have a lot around is Fort Collins, Windsor, Timneth. I mean, there's most, a lot of municipalities are home rule. They're not required to follow state statutes in the matters of local or municipal concern. So that's something we can talk about if the trustees are interested at some point in time, maybe a year from now, talk about what home rule might mean and do some deep down investigating if that's an option for Wellington. It does provide the municipality a lot more options. Sometimes state statutes come down that maybe we don't agree, the trustees don't agree with or don't want to put in place. And if you're a home rule municipality, a lot of times you can opt out of things that are coming down from the state. So that is one of the perks of being home rule. So powers and rules are provided in state statutes and the constitution. If you're interested in looking, Colorado revised statutes, Title twenty-nine talks about local government and Title thirty-one talks about municipal government. A lot of information is in both of those statutes. If you're interested in your need some, some light reading before you go to bed. Tax, Taber is taxpayers' bill of rights. It was approved in nineteen ninety-two, which limits the amount of revenue the state of Colorado can retain and spend. The Wellington Municipal Code is online. We do keep that updated. We use a company called MuniCode to keep our municipal code updated. We have hard copies in our office, but the, the online version is the one I always go to. And then, of course, resolutions, policies, and procedures. And we have a council manager or administrator form of government. And I do work for all seven of you, which is all kinds of fun. It truly is. So next is our organizational chart. That is included in your binder as well. We currently have sixty-one full-time employees. It's, it's a full group. It is, it is a lot of people, but about the right size for the size of municipality. We, we really rank in there where we belong as far as staffing and things like that. We will be, we will be doing a compensation study later this year to make sure that we are staying equitable with other regions around us that, you know, we're, we are competing with Fort Collins and, and Windsor and Timneth and everybody else for employees. A lot of, a lot of the positions in local government are, are special to local government. You don't have a wastewater operator other than maybe in a special district or you're building official. So a lot of our positions are, are specific to local government and we work hard to acquire and retain those employees. So part of that is pay and equity and things like that. So we will be talking about that with you all as the year goes on. Advisory boards and commissions. So we have quite, we have several advisory boards and commissions. Some, some have staff liaisons, some don't. At your meeting on the twenty-sixth, we'll be bringing forward, we'll, we'll be Mayor Chozi, Chozi will be bringing forward appointments to those various boards and commissions. There are some that are outside of the town of Wellington that will require appointments as well, such as our Wayshed Group and things like that. So we'll put more information together in your, in your meeting packet on the twenty-sixth for that. Another item is the advisory board appointment process, which I've heard some feedback that potentially that might want to be switched up or changed up a little bit. Potentially that would be a work session item later. We can kind of talk about that. I don't want to take time to go through problem solving tonight, just so that we can get through this information. Then I do have it listed as potentially work session item and I can talk to the mayor about that. So currently there's an online application on the town's website and the interview process is two trustees interview candidates. And that includes the chair and generally the liaison to the board. And then there's a recommendation to the mayor and the trustees confirm that recommendation. There's potential new groups. So the resident water rate roundtable, which will be, you know, pretty much an ad hoc committee, not a formal appointment process. I had sent out an email earlier talking about that a little bit, how the trustees, how we had done the sewer rate roundtable. The trustees had chosen one person that they wanted to appoint, and then each of the boards and commissions had an opportunity to appoint one person from their border commission, starting with the chair and the vice chair and so on. I know members of the sewer roundtable want to participate as well. So we can talk about how that structure looks at the next meeting, but want to make sure that I'm, I'm, I'm doing what you want as far as putting that together. The resident finance committee, that'll be more of a structured committee, which will be approved by ordinance. So it'll be in our code. There'll be a set of bylaws and things like that and formal, formal recommendations for appointment by the mayor and then approved by the trustees. All right. This is just a basic graph of the role of elected officials and the role of staff. You know, it's, it's hard sometimes when you come into being an elected official and you're used to doing a lot of work and you like doing all the work. But your job as an elected official is policy. Your job is to tell us what you want done. And then it's our job as staff to go through and, and problem solve and come with those, come up with ideas on how, what that looks like, whatever, if it's a project or an idea, whatever that looks like. So in the middle, so we have our politics, we have our, our, our elected officials, and then we have staff. And in between is like myself and the attorney and Kelly Hodling is the deputy town administrator. So we're kind of, we try to fill that gap. So when there's communication and things that happen, that should go through myself or Kelly Hodling, or if you have a legal question, that goes directly to Dan. So, you know, we, staff reports to me. And so that's, that's how it works is I'm, I'm like that in-between person. If I'm not here, Kelly Hodling is here and she would be the one that you would, you would put your questions to if you had questions for staff and things like that. That just, if you read the memo that I put in the front of your binder, that kind of explains why it works that way. So I can keep track of what's happening. I can keep track of if there's issues that we need to deal with. Sometimes they're little issues, sometimes they're big issues and I have to get on it right away. So that's the only way I can track it to make sure you all are well aware and stay informed and we are meeting your needs as needed. Governance structure. Mayor is elected at large before your term, presides over all board trustee meetings, controls the agenda. He can vote and he can call a special meeting. The mayor pro tem. So mayor pro tem has been selected and performs the duties of the mayor if absent. So in the code, it talks about who can call a special meeting and it does say in the code that the, that the mayor can call a special meeting, but it also says the board of trustees can call a special meeting. So when there's opportunity and time is, is available, I like to bring that to the trustees so that there's public engagement. The public knows that we are going to be conducting a special meeting. Nothing's a surprise. But there are, there may be times, and when there's an emergency or something like that, I think of COVID. I think a, a special meeting had to get called because work had to get done. You had to enter into your, and get your emergency ordinance. So you know, we'll, we'll do our best to make sure that it's always before the trustees, but there may be times that the mayor himself needs to call and then we will notify the rest of the board. So appointed officers, myself, town clerk, town attorney, town treasurer, and municipal judge who did the swearing in today. It was really nice to see Judge Blau. So I am moving on now. I'm done talking. Thank goodness. Thank you, everyone.
Yes, I know.
Dan Sapienza, as I said, attorney of March and Olive, our firm represents the town as town attorney for about the last twenty, twenty-five years. This slide is on the board of trustees, meeting process and procedures. And as you're looking at this, I think you should think that this is, this board's processes and procedures. These are not laid out in code. This is more just how it's been working. So we're going to be working with the new mayor on how these meetings are going to go. So, and this can all be changed, but I'm kind of just want to give kind of a framework for how meetings have gone. The agenda is set by the mayor. Members of the board can request items to be on the agenda. I think it takes a, a majority vote to get something on the agenda, but the mayor sets the agenda, I think, on the Thursday, officially on the Thursday before the meeting. We have a call, a call to order, which includes pledge of allegiance. We'll call it, et cetera. We'll have amendments to the agenda. Usually these are worked out in advance of a meeting. So if there's going to be an amendment, what will happen there? You cannot really add items to the agenda though, and that's really important with municipal government, government in Colorado. An agenda item where you will be taking action must be provided, you must provide notice to the public in advance. So if it's not on the agenda, we really can't add it at the time. We usually will use as an opportunity to bump items off the agenda that maybe aren't ready for prime time or to move things around. So that isn't quite as interesting as it perhaps could be where you could surprise people. That's good for the public and good for government. Conflicts of interest at the beginning. I'll talk more about conflicts of interest later. We have a whole statute or a code section in the Wellington Municipal Code on ethics and conflicts of interest. But at the beginning of the meeting, if you do have a conflict on an action item, this is where you would announce that and recuse yourself from that deliberation of that item. Community participation, as many of you know, as you've been quite involved with over the years, this is where you give up and give public comment on items that are not on the agenda. Excuse me, where the public gets up to give comment on items not on the agenda. There's a consent agenda. That's items that are, I don't necessarily require a lot of deliberation. This, right now, the items that are on the consent agenda always would be the meeting minutes. Those would, you don't give opportunity for public comment on those items. A lot of municipalities use the consent agenda for other items like regular contract reviews or other very simp, simple items that don't necessarily require public comment. Usually if an item's put on the consent calendar, members of the board can remove those. Any member of the board can remove an item from the consent calendar. Then we get to action items and action items. The town has kind of fell, fallen into its groove with the previous mayor on how this works. And that's the agenda item is called. There's discussion among the board. Then there is public comment. Then there's further discussion with the board followed by a motion and it passes or it doesn't pass. The reason I say that's sort of more the town's process is if you look at Roberts rules and a lot of very formal rules of procedure and rules of order for governing bodies, public comment isn't in there. And usually you'd actually have to make a motion in order to have a discussion. But that's not how it works with the town of Wellington. So it's a little different if you're reading up on parliamentary procedure, which is just one of my favorite bedtime topics. You might find that we do things a little different here and that's on purpose. The idea is that the board can have a real discussion to form the idea to form that motion before it's presented, seconded, and decided. Also finding the room for that public comment in there so the public can have a, a voice on each individual item. Liquor license authority is listed on here. And the reason I put that in specifically is, is the board of trustees sits as the liquor license authority. However, it needs to vote to enter into the liquor license authority. So it's a separate item. And those will often have public hearings. It's a very set process and we'll walk you through that as it comes. At the end of the meeting, we have reports and adjourn, we adjourn. Adjourning requires a motion in a second. I did put at the end here, executive session. And executive sessions are a really important item for any board to think about. But it isn't actually, doesn't need to be on an agenda. When we're formulating agendas and we're hoping to put all that together, usually we try and plan in advance. We know that an executive session should be called, so we'll put that on the agenda. I think it's best practice that everybody knows that's going to happen. It also helps so we can put it at the end of the agenda, because what happens with an executive session is everybody needs to leave the room. We close the doors, the meeting, the executive session continues to be recorded, but it's just between the board, usually the attorney, the clerks there and, and town administrators there, and only the staff that's absolutely necessary to be involved. While we try to plan that out, if at any time something comes up and you need legal advice and you want to have a privileged attorney-client conversation, even in the middle of a board meeting, we can enter into executive session at that time. Essentially, there are magic words that need to be said based on Colorado revised statutes. Based on this, 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 we will enter into executive session to have an attorney-client conversation about X. Once that's done, the board can enter into the executive session at any time. There's a number of specific items that that can happen for. So that's in your packet in the end, with, I think, one of the CML collected official handbooks. Bob's Rules are what the town usually has used for its rules of order. The town code actually says that the town uses Roberts rules. And if you ever want to read Roberts rules, it's a book about that thick. It's designed after the US Congress and how it operates, which of course is a beacon of efficiency and good decision-making. It works though. It, it works for legislative deliberative processes and that's what it's designed to do. But for small towns like this, it is quite frankly, too much. So a lot of municipalities use sort of an abridged version of various sorts. Colorado Municipal League created Bob's Rules, which are a simplified, but also a modified Roberts rules. So don't just think of Bob's Rules as a cheat sheet, because it is different. If you learn Bob's Rules, you have not learned Roberts Rules. The town board, though, adopted those a, a number of years ago as the rules of order that will be used by the board of trustees. So it's what we've continued to use. Bob's Rule is the most recent version. I think it's the twenty twenty version is included in your binder. And it's, it provides a good basis for how it all works. Don't need to go over everything, but it's important to think of the mayor in all of this. The mayor serves as the parliamentarian. That means the decision maker. That means the person that decides how the meeting will run. The mayor is the person that grants somebody the floor. And if you don't have the floor, you're not allowed to speak. The mayor is the person that decides issues of parliamentary procedure. So if you raise a point of order and say, I'm not sure we've had the proper motion. I'm not sure this has been seconded properly. That goes to the mayor. The mayor's the very one who needs to know all the rules and make a decision. But that's also why we have staff here. So if you ever have a question, we're happy to answer those questions and help the mayor make the decision. I'd say the key point is for Bob's Rules or any rules of order is you must, that's why usually during, during that agenda, when there's a deliberation or discussion, the mayor sits there and will look around the room and Mayor Hammond used to start at one end and go to the other. Would you like to say something? Would you like to say something? Generally, you want to make sure that everybody on the deliberative body has an opportunity to speak for potentially a set period of time before others have the opportunity to speak. You have been granted the floor. You may speak now. Your time is up. You've been granted the floor. So it keeps everything orderly and civilized, I suppose, is the way that works. There are specific points that are discussed in the Bob's, Bob's Rules that are in your packet, points of order, points of information, points of appeal. Happy to discuss all of those at another time. Point of order is the big one that we're most of the time use, which is point of order. I'm not sure that we're using the proper procedure. And that's more of a question to the board and then, or to the chair, who then can ask us if that's the case. Then you make motions. Motions have to be seconded. There are motions to consider items. I make a motion to approve, a motion to authorize, a motion to adopt. That's usually what we hear. There are also motions to adjourn, motion to reconsider. And if you're considering doing a motion to reconsider, raise a point of information and ask the parliamentarian how to do that, because that requires some very specific steps. And also a motion to postpone. So there's usually a motion postponed to a date certain or a motion to postpone indefinitely. And if you post some, postpone something indefinitely, that means it's never coming back up. So it essentially kills it. But all those have to be seconded. We are always here to answer questions about how the meetings run, about parliamentary procedure. And we'll go over this a lot in the future. And if the board would like to adopt Roberts rules instead of Bob's rules at some point, we're happy to help you walk you through that. So the board generally takes exactions by some very specific processes. The town has ordinances, resolutions, the board will make motions. There are mayoral proclamations. Ordinances are generally laws. There are things that apply to everyone generally. So if we're changing the jaywalking ordinance, I'm not sure what it has a jaywalking ordinance off the top of my head. But that would be, if you want to make a change to town code, you do that via ordinance. Ordinances need to be moved. They may need to be published. They do not become effective for thirty days after passage. A resolution, while the slide says it's less formal than an ordinance, I'm not less, I'm not sure less formal is quite the right term. A, a resolution becomes effective immediately, but there are really things that are binding on the town. So when the town wants to set water rates, that's done by resolution. It's not permanent. It will be changed at some point. And it's really about how the town's going to do something and that's how it's going to charge water rates. We'll, we're always on the lookout for how to do, which one of those we need to do. Sometimes that's set by state statute. Sometimes there's a lot of reasons I might choose a resolution versus an ordinance. But ordinances, resolutions, they all need to be moved by motion. So I move to adopt and then somebody has to second that. You also use motions to adopt budgets, appoint officers. All of this is done by motion. Sometimes the board sits in as a quasi judicial body. Everything I've said up till now is the board sitting as a legislative body. It is the board adopting policies. Decide what the best policy is going to be. It's a deliberation amongst yourselves. But when you sit as a quasi judicial body, you're actually sitting as judges. And the decisions you make as a quasi judicial body directly affect the rights of individuals. So when somebody wants to, well, I'm going to use the example that actually doesn't come before the board of trustees, just because it's on my mind, with the board of adjustment. If somebody wants a variance from a zoning ordinance, they would go to the board of adjustment for a, a variance. That body then sits as a quasi judicial body. It is making a decision about something that affects only that one person and their property. And that's the same as what, sometimes that comes before the board of trustees. Your obligation is to have a fair hearing, ensure due process to protect that person's rights. So you need to be impartial. You need to only consider the evidence that's brought before you at that public hearing. That's why you need to try to avoid ex parte communications, which means communications with the people that are, well, communications with really anybody about the subject of that hearing. And that would be the person who's applying, who wants to have this change. It'd also be their neighbors. It would be just about anybody who wants to come talk to you about, hey, you're going to hear this thing. Those are ex parte communications. And the reason you need to avoid that is the decisions you make as a judge in a quasi judicial hearing is appealable to in court. So it needs to be defensible, what your decision was. So it needs to be based on a very clear record that will be presented to you at that quasi judicial hearing. Sersa, who's our insurance company who has, I believe they have some trainings on quasi judicial hearings that we're going to start bringing to the town of Wellington for the boards and commissions. And I definitely would recommend everybody participate in as many trainings on that as possible. It's, there are just certain rules, but it is a different sort of meeting. So important to think of them as different meetings. Colorado has very clear, open meetings laws. All meetings of a governing body at which public business will be discussed and essentially when action is taken, needs to be open to the public and held only after full and timely public notice. So that's why at the beginning of a meeting, we can't add items to our agenda, because once notice has gone out, the public knows what might be considered by that public body at that time. And those are the items that you're allowed to, allowed to talk about. Executive sessions are the exclusion there, but in an executive sessions, no actual decisions can be made. So if we enter into an executive session on legal advice on a pending motion that's before the board, no decisions can be made. And once we exit that executive session, then the board can actually take official action. The executive session is just to provide information. Sometimes provide a better consultation to staff on certain items. Now Crystal's going to talk more about open meetings. I do want to mention one item, you can come on up. I just want to finish on, on agendas. An item that's been a little confusing over the years, agendas versus packets. So if something's on the agenda, it can be discussed and action can be taken. But sometimes an amendment might be offered that's not included in a packet. That's okay. It just has to give notice to the public that an item generally will be discussed. So don't be caught, don't be caught up on, well, this agenda or this amendment that we're talking about to this ordinance, whatever, wasn't in the packet. As long as it was on, as it was on the agenda, it can be discussed and actually be taken. And we'll help walk you through that. And if you ever have questions, definitely let us know in the meeting room before.
Hello. So again, Crystal Liker, town clerk. I'm going to go over open meeting rules. So state statute requires, requires us to provide notice to the public at least twenty-four hours prior to a meeting. We have our website, website is designated as our primary posting place. And we also post our agendas at the post office, our bulletin board at town hall, and here at the library. So a meeting is three or more members of the board that are conducting business. That does not include any chance meetings. So if you're in a restaurant and there's more than three trustees in there, that's not considered a meeting. And then the special meetings, as Patty mentioned earlier, can be called by the mayor or the majority of the trustees. So open meetings, when it comes to email and social media. So as mentioned before, a meeting is any kind of gathering convened to discuss public business. And sometimes officials can start getting comfortable using emails to discuss any type of legislation. We want to stay away from doing that, because if there's three or more individuals within those email change, that can be considered an open meeting. So some ways to avoid that is keeping discussion about legislation in these meetings. Limiting the use of email between the board members and because you've not, you're not sure, once you send that email, who that's going to be forwarded off to. So and then you know, it's, sorry about that. So if there is use of emails to discuss legislative items, there can be email systems that can publish those emails. So those can be a little costly. So keeping those emails and discussions limited can save us some money in the end too.
There's a code of ethics that's in the municipal code of the town of Wellington. It's in chapter two, article six. And I thought it might be helpful if I just went away. I just wanted to read part of the purpose of that. This is in section two, six, twenty. Subsection A says, "The proper operation of democratic government requires that public officials and employees be independent, impartial, and responsible to the people." impartial and responsible to the people. That government decisions and policy be made in proper channels of the government structure, that public office not be used for personal gain and that public officials and employees maintain a standard of conduct that will inspire public confidence in the integrity of the government." I thought that's a good summary of why we have a code of ethics. It has some very specific requirements that are laid out in chapter two, article six. And you're also bound by parts of the Colorado Constitution. And there's a lot of restrictions on what public officials can do. Many of those are described in the CML Elected Officials Handbook. If you ever have questions about, somebody has offered me a gift, what can I do? Please call me or call the town administrator. Really, it's about not using your position to gain an unfair advantage. Where this comes up most often is at the beginning of agenda where there's the code or the conflict of interest section. And the idea is if we do not want board members to be voting on items with which they have a conflict of interest. And usually that means that if it's an item that you will gain financially personally from the result of that vote, you should recuse yourself. If you're kind of on the fence and going, I'm not sure if I have a conflict or not, talk to me before the meeting, give me a call. What we don't want is you sit and participate in deliberation. And then right before the vote, after you've already said your piece, right before the vote, go, well, I'm just going to abstain from this one. First of all, abstention from a vote is not a thing. If you abstain, that is a no vote. You need to recuse yourself from the entire conversation. And when you recuse yourself, you should step down from the diocese. And I would actually recommend, and we'll discuss this later, that the, that individual actually leave the room if you have a conflict. But I'd recommend reading chapter two, article six. And if you ever have questions about ethics, always happy to talk confidentially. It's next for me.
So all of you have been provided email addresses. I've given the new elected officials information on what your email address is, how to log into your computers, how to log in on the office suite. So keeping in mind that all town business conducted through email, if it's your personal email or your town, town email, those are subject to Cora. So any information distributed through that can be requested. The laptops are issued by the town. There is software on, on those from our managed services company to keep them up to date. And then one of the best ways to contact all of you at the same time is on the town trustees webpage on our website. There is a, in big letters, it says, "Contact the trustees, click here." So residents can send all of you an email at one time. It also goes Patty Garcia and Kelly Hodeling, and then we can respond accordingly.
So just a couple of things about the email. One of the things that we talk about in local government is we never put anything in an email that we would not want to see on the front page, front page of a newspaper. So keep that in mind. And I can't tell you how many times I'll type and I'm like, delete, delete, delete. So it's just keeping you aware of your words mean something. And we recently saw something that happened with the city of Loveland that, that one of their, one of the staff members was emailing and texting one of the council members. And then there was a core request. This, the core request was for records from back when I worked there. And that's now been put all over the newspaper. And there were some very, there were some things that were said that were not appropriate for. I mean, they weren't bad, but I mean, it was talking about the mayor and different things and it just wasn't appropriate. So I always try to remind myself and remind my team and telling you all the same thing. As far as the emails that go from the website to all of you. So the direction that I had been given at the past retreat was, so that email comes to everybody and myself and Kelly Hodeling. And I was given direction to respond to those and copying all of the trustees on that. You are more than welcome to reach out to those individuals on your own. But the town will always provide a succinct response to the question. So that way it's, it's, it's just done by one person as opposed to a bunch of different opinions or ideas. So that seems to have worked well this year. We can talk about it when we meet with Kathy Novak to make sure that's still the direction you want to go. Just a quick thing on outside organizations. These are just a couple of them that are listed. I have quite a few of them listed in your handbook on page five. The mayor will be appointing individuals or trustees to those various, to the various boards or commissions on April 26th. So that's always, we kind of try to get that done pretty quickly so that we can get you ingrained in whatever boards or commissions that you get appointed to. And we can start getting your role. And everybody's gone through elections, so many municipalities, so we're all going through the same thing. So some of those regional, some of those regional boards and commissions are now getting all new people. So there will be a time to catch up and learn and we will be, staff will be here to help you along the way as well. All right, we're almost done. You guys have been so patient. Do you have any, I can pause, do you have any questions? Or I know it's a lot and the handbook is a lot, but wanted to give you all the tools that we felt would be beneficial to you. Are we good? Keep going, all right. So now you're going to hear from each of the staff members, just a couple of minutes from each person to talk a little bit about their department and what they do and what their responsibilities are. So as I said before, the town operates as the council manager for a government. That's very typical. There's some strong mayor municipalities in the state of Colorado, city and county of Denver, city of Colorado Springs, city of Pueblo. So and the strong mayor was a form of government, government that was very popular in like the 1920s and 1930s. And there was a lot of corruption. And that's when they started changing to having essentially a CEO come in and be the administrator for the, for the company and having a board of directors that that person would, would report to. And that's been very effective, very popular in the state of Colorado. Other states I have not researched, but I know that in the state of Colorado, this is one of the, the ways that it's done. So I oversee staff, I oversee the day to day operations of the town. So if you send me an email and there's a reason and I don't respond like in a day, that's not because I don't want to. Generally it's because I'm doing a, there's a multitude of other things that I'm working on with staff. And I will do my best to respond as quickly as I can. I do try to respond within 24 hours. Sometimes it's immediate. Sometimes you call me and I answer on the half a ring, like I did with trustee McDonald today. And other times it'll go to my voicemail, but I will respond. I do respond really great with text messages. That's one of the things I see first. I'll make sure you all have my, my, my cell phone number. So that is that it's easy for me to see. It's something I have on me all the time, the emails, sometimes I don't see until a little bit later. So if it's an emergency or if you need a question answered right away, that's the best way to get in touch with me. So one of my other jobs is to make recommendations to the Board of Trustees. You all provide me ideas, policy ideas, things like that. And then I present those ideas to you. How, however, not, don't present the ideas, but I present the options to you based on those ideas. I get a lot of help from this team back here. We are, we are an amazing team and they do such great work and they are so incredibly smart. Just surprised me every day. And one of the other things that I work on is preparing the town budget for your review. So we will talk about how you want that created this year. If you want a retreat again, we had a retreat this past year, it seemed to work well. But is that the direction you want to go? And I want to make sure that you all have time to sit around a table and talk about that budget before it gets too far into the process. That was one of the hiccups we had last year is we kind of backed into it a little bit and didn't have time for the trustees to really talk about it. So that's one of the promises I made to the past board that we would, we would make sure to add those extra, that extra time in. And I believe Kelly Hodeling is going to come and talk.
Good evening, Mayor and Board of Trustees, Kelly Hodeling, Deputy Town Administrator. So the administrative office oversees a wide variety of internal and external services for the community. One of the things that is a core function of ours is human resources. And that's headed up by Stephanie Anderson, who you met tonight, our HR manager. And the goal there is to attract, retain and train a high skilled workforce. So we've seen a lot of growth in the last several years in Wellington. And we want to keep the good staff that we have. So we have to constantly focus on the training opportunities and then events like today. So quarterly meetings, just making sure the team is informed. So that's important to a highly engaged workforce. Another thing that we oversee is our property and casualty insurance. That's through SIRS. And I think we have a presentation by them next week. So that's ensuring essentially that our facilities are safe for our community and for staff and that we have a safe workforce every day that they come to work. So we're going to really focus on training of, safety training specifically of our employees. That'll be a main thing that we do. Also communications, so within my tenure of the town, we hired our first communications person, Mahala Henshaw. And she's done a fantastic job. She's a team of one. And she works on the website, social media, the print materials that you see. So she helps out every single department. And it's amazing what we do with such a lean staff and Mahala's help. Another thing that is new this year is community and business relations. We've heard that from the community that we needed to focus on our businesses and community outreach through some of our events. And so we're really starting, that's a new area. We're working on business licensing. We're trying to sophisticate some of our resources online. And I'm proud of the team's work that we've done with Callie Cooper. And we're really trying to move things forward in that direction. Another thing that we do is grants management. So right now we're overseeing $2.5 million of a variety of grant funding for the community. And I think we have another $3 million of current applications. So we're constantly looking for dollars. We know that's a main priority is chasing down every single dollar. And this entire team at the town, we work really, really hard in every department on our grants management team to ensure that we're getting every dollar that Wellington deserves. Our last thing that we oversee is water efficiency and that's done by Hallie Sheldon. And that's ensuring that we have good training, we have processes in place so we can educate the public on a lot of the water issues that we have. So thank you so much.
Hello again, Crystal Iker, Town Clerk. So some of the pieces that the Town Clerk's office works on, you guys have definitely seen through the packets, agendas and minutes that have been sent out to you and posted on our website. So working with the rest of the staff in the town to make sure that we have all the documentation and information needed to get you guys, to get to you guys to make the decisions that you need, need to make. I also oversee the records within the town. So making sure that if we have a records request come through, that those records are accessible or able to find those to provide to the public. Also oversee municipal elections. So we had a municipal election or we had an election in 2021 that we coordinated with Thurman County with. And then most recently, our 2022 municipal town election. Also certify the ordinances and resolutions that are passed by the Board of Trustees. So once those are signed and stamped, those are certified. Provide, also provide oversight to the public records requests. So making sure those are done in a timely manner. Are working with our cemetery. Our admin assistant has been taking on that role of working with the public to work with families on any cemetery items that might come up. Working on liquor licensing as well. So processing any renewals that come through town, any new applications. There's a slew of other applications that could come through town. But when those come through, I'll work with you guys and get you the information needed. And also support the municipal court clerk and the IT position. Sorry about that, I didn't move the slide on you guys. There you go.
Good evening, I'm Victoria Runcle. And I'm actually the interim finance director. They are searching for a permanent finance director. So thank you for having me. Let's see here, yes, the finance department does, you know, all the things that a finance department would do. Accounts payable, accounts receivable, we do the annual audit, we have budget prep to do all that. We also do financial reporting and we oversee purchasing policy, which, yes, we do oversee the purchasing policy and payable is very important and utility billing. So people pay the bills and we have quite a bit of that work that we do. Oops, that's all. And so that's basically what we do. We have a very small staff. We have five people in total. And the most important thing is that we are now, just on May 2nd, we'll be getting a new accounts payable clerk. And I know that doesn't, but it's very exciting for us in finance. Because right now it's three of us and I would actually argue I have. So thank you.
Well, again, Bob Gowing, Public Works Director. The Public Works Department is organized into four divisions, primarily water, wastewater, streets, which also includes drainage and fleet and facilities and engineering. We have 27 and a half FTEs, which actually means we have 28 people because people will come in halves. So we're generally charged with operating, maintaining, improving, creating public infrastructure for the town. That would basically be anything that's physical that's outside of the parks. So that would include the building facilities as well. And obviously the, the water and sewer plants that we've talked about many times in the past couple of years. We manage the capital improvement program. And actually, in general, but more specifically manage all the projects that come out of the funds that we're primarily attached to, which are the water fund, the sewer fund, the street fund and the drainage fund. So that's all in the five year plan and the budgets. I'm sure you have some budget information in your, in your book. And, and you'll see what that capital improvement program looks like for us. It's pretty extensive. But generally that would range all the way from infrastructure master planning to design or design management, construction or construction management. And of course, ultimately we would operate and maintain those systems as well. We provide engineering services. There's five engineers in Public Works, one of whom is myself. We, most of those engineering services are related to the CIP, obviously, and, and the O and M things that we do. But also we perform development review, engineering development review, working closely with the planning and building department. I'm the town engineer, which is a title that's in our standards and creates a certain responsibility that we have for the adequacy of the engineering that happens in Wellington. We, so we are generally, and it says oversees the town's water, wastewater and storm drainage enterprises. But really that's a team effort. And we, we oversee a large chunk of that, but we work closely with administration, finance planning, and really everybody in the town in terms of managing those enterprises. And that's it. Thank you.
Good evening again. Cody Byrd, Director of Planning and Development. This is code enforcement because the planning department includes planning, zoning, building and code enforcement. We're very much a public service oriented department. We provide customer service to everyone in town and everyone not in town who wants to come and work in town. We work directly with developers, builders, businesses to guide them through the town's land use processes. This includes, and I'm just looking at that slide and those letters are really small, so my apologies. It is, but I, it's hard to read unless it's right in front of you. But yeah, the, the department works with, with all of those agencies to guide through our, our land use processes. We've recently updated the comprehensive plan for the community. It's a community vision for where we want to be in the next 20 to 40 years. That was an iterative process. We worked with all of our other departments in the town to help craft that along with input from the public. Then building off of the comprehensive plans or land use code, which was also recently adopted. Those are the actual regulations that apply to businesses, development, growth. And we, all those applications come through this department. As Mr. Gowing alluded to, the planning department works very closely with Public Works, particularly for development review. We're also a large part of the master plan efforts. We coordinate with the sewer modeling, the wastewater or the stormwater wastewater modeling, making sure that those applications, as they come through, are consistent with our infrastructure master plan so that we can manage growth with, with purposeful intent, which is strategic, the strategic plan of this board. And you'll be looking at that soon. We host a variety of other types of applications regarding land use, rezoning, conditional uses, variances. The planning staff provides support for the planning commission, the Board of Adjustments, Board of Trustees. We also work with the Parks Advisory Board periodically on various things. We'll be assisting the Parks and Recreation Department with the Parks and Trail Master Plan. We'll be assisting the Parks and Recreation Department with the Parks and Trail Master Plan Update. So we have a very diverse, working with everyone and including down to every homeowner that comes in and submits an application for a basement finish, a shed, a fence. All those applications come through this department. We were very fortunate to hire an in-house building official a year ago. Having that building official services in town has been extremely instrumental in improving our customer service back to our residents, back to our business owners to provide that hands-on right here, right now and not having to call Safe Built and have them come out to take a look at something. We can react very quickly. We do, however, still use Safe Built. They do our plan of inspection for building services. And it's a great partnership. We're very happy with the service they provide to us, but it has been really helpful to have that more local piece in our staff. And then occasionally we find that there are homeowners that have created a violation of our land use regulations or municipal code. Our department also includes neighborhood services, also called code enforcement. Not a very popular division, we have a very talented individual who is responsible for that. And we absolutely try to work with homeowners to gain compliance. We're very patient, we work with them, give them time to meet any corrections. Occasionally it can result, if some, if things aren't corrected, it can result in a trip to municipal court. In which case we have a whole set of procedures that we follow for that particular thing. So this department gets to see everything from very start conceptualization to the very finish. And if that's how you think about this department, we're every step of the way and we're here to help. Thank you.
My name's Matt Cherry, I'm the Sergeant here for the Limerick County Sheriff's Office. The Sheriff's Office is contracted by the town to do your law enforcement services. Several of the deputies will work here in town. I actually live here, I myself, my little girl goes to school here and we've been here for a long time. So we have some very personal investments here in the town. Make sure we get to my slides and keep on task here. Obviously the town contracts for myself to be here in town, my corporal, Corporal Downey, who just happens to be in the back of the room. Says eight deputies, those eight deputies are six deputies that are actively working the street. We have three deputies work on Biscara Red Side and we have three deputies that work on our blue side. But we also have a school resource officer that I, obviously I'm sure everybody knows Nancy Remington. She works in the schools full-time, covering the three schools. When school opens, she's going to end up covering four schools until hopefully we get another school resource officer to help out with that. We certainly have our desk officer, Deputy Matt Piper back in the room. He mans the front desk at the Sheriff's Office Annex, handling all types of calls from folks that come in. Want, want to report crimes, been inspections. Of course, you know, if there's nothing else going on, he's handling phone cases from all over the county. So he's very busy. Focusing on that community oriented police presence in the town. This is one of my big focuses is, is getting out of the car. That really limits our abilities to, to actually talk to citizens. My direction or deputies is get the heck out of the car, go play with the kids in the park, go to the Boys and Girls Club, hang out with the kids. They actually shared a really cool photo of a couple of our deputies there yesterday playing or throwing the ball around. We were there last month playing dodgeball, which is a ton of fun. I don't like getting hit with the ball, but I was worried that I was going to get targeted, but, but it was a lot of fun. Any of the events that, that we have here in town, you're going to see deputies, not only just the deputies that are assigned to the town, but you're going to have reserves, you're going to have the cadets, you're going to have all kinds of different volunteers. And speaking of volunteers, I'm trying to get our, our Sheriff's Office auxiliary staff to come up here, do some crime prevention. In addition to, to working with Mahala, who's been great, working with our press information officer to get information out about how we can get these, these types of events going so that we can educate our citizens about neighborhood watch and those types of things. This is all, this is very, very deceiving, just as far as what you see, sergeant, the corporal, deputies, that type of thing. Because there's a ton of services that you're, that you're getting that you just don't see from our SWAT team, Full Investigations Division, Crime Lab, Victims Advocates, Mental Health Co-Responders Units, Traffic Safety Unit. K9, you're getting, there's a lot of things that you're seeing just kind of on the back end. I'm sure that you've seen our traffic safety trailer out there. I just had it move from our traffic safety unit from the third over to Jefferson, get people slowed, slowing down. I'm sure you've seen the trailer over there at the bomb guards. That was our investigations division that brought that up, just to kind of deter crime. So I'm always around if you need me. I don't work, although it feels like it sometimes, I don't work 24 hours a day. But grab my business card and give me a call anytime you need anything. Thank you.
Again, I'm Dan Sapienza, I'm an attorney with March and Olive. March and Olive is a law firm in Fort Collins, Colorado. We have three attorneys on staff, myself, Brad March and Stuart Olive. Brad has represented the town of Wellington since sometime in the nineties. So we've got a lot of really good history with Brad. And he continues to, even though I'm the face of March and Olive with the town right now, Brad's history, he's still doing a lot of work there in the background. And we're also very fortunate to have Stuart Olive as part of our firm. He's a municipal judge and he's been a municipal judge down in Berthoud and Timna for a number of years. So we bring a lot of diversity to the services we can provide to town. We are a contract attorney, so I'm a contracted attorney. And we do build the town by the tenth of the hour, just like any other client. So definitely be aware that if you're calling us and asking a lot of questions, I mean, that we build the town. That's, that's part of what we do. We do charge the town a very good rate and we also really underbill the town. So we'll be as good as we can with you. So, but I always like to let you know that, so if you're just, damn, let's just talk for a couple of hours. That's not always maybe in the best interest of the town. So my role and our, our firm's role is to act as a legal advisor and to be the attorney for the town and specifically for the Board of Trustees. If you look at the org chart that's in your board binder, we're in that little tiny line that comes off directly from the Board of Trustees. Where don't work for Patty, the Town Administrator, we report, report directly to the Board of Trustees. So my job is to advise, make sure we're providing you the best counsel as possible. As part of that, if you have a question about maybe a proposed law, proposed ordinance, you have an idea about something. I'm, I'm happy to talk you through that. I will definitely strive to provide confidential information to you, to the, to the best extent we can, you know. If you want to say, I'm thinking about maybe the town doing X. I don't know if we can do that. Give me a call, happy to talk you through it. If we need to draft a formal memo, I'm, I'm happy to do that as well. But I can, I also would love to just talk with you about your ideas and make sure they're, they'll work. And I'll provide you as good of advice as I can. We also advise any officers in the department head. So I work with Bob as we're doing contracts for the wastewater plant, the water plant. I work a lot with Cody with development agreements. I work a lot with Crystal on all sorts of things that happen through the clerk's office. So provide legal advice to all town staff, the Town Administrator. Serve as the prosecutor for the municipal court. So when Cody's code compliance folks find a dog barking or perhaps too much trash in somebody's yard, that comes to municipal court and I'll be the prosecutor for that. And also work a lot with Limerick County Sheriff's Office for the traffic tickets, the accidents, any summons that'll come to municipal court. I serve as the town prosecutor for that. I review and draft ordinances, contracts, resolutions, just about any document you see. I've had to review and go through to try and make sure that we're providing, the town is providing the, the best legal documents it can. And I'm going to call your attention to any matters that, that I see. In a board discussion, I often sit there somewhat quietly. I, I don't necessarily like to interject with my own policy ideas. That's your job here. If I hear something wrong, legally wrong, I, I will interject. And so, so know that I am sitting there and I'm, I'm trying to provide advice in the middle of a meeting. But it, I don't see that it's my job to give policy advice in the middle of a meeting. Outside of that meeting, as you're preparing an ordinance or something and you want to spitball an idea off me. I've worked in government for a long time at a lot of levels. So I'm happy to talk about policy ideas. But in the meeting, when you're in the middle of your deliberations, I usually am just sitting there rather quiet. Have you also been said, ask me questions. If you are in the middle of a meeting and you say, I want to know about X, that's what I'm there for. And pretty much do any, anything else that the board needs me to do. I, I like to help Patty out as much as I can. So I'm being pretty involved with the orientation and making sure you guys get up to speed. I love good governance and working with governments, so happy to help there. If you ever need anything, give me a call, my cell phones in your, in your board binder, you can email me. I'm pretty available, so.
Oh, it's me, hi, I'm Ross. I'm going to say really quickly, I always get nervous up here. It probably won't change, maybe it will because I'm not the newbie. There are other newbies, so welcome. I always do this just so you get used to it. So welcome, I am the director at the library right over here. We, in order to save time, I think a succinct way to share what we do is to go over our mission. The Wellington Public Library, cooperation with the Town of Wellington honors our history with focused intent on the future, which we have really done this year. Our mission is to serve and reflect every 11,608, I think there was a newborn, members of Wellington in an enlightened, democratic and unified approach. Our guiding ideals are community, connection, curiosity. We've worked really hard to connect to businesses, to other departments in town, to trustees and what they want. We're building a youth council, which will develop into, yes, I know you're happy. It's really great. I was going to have Sawyer stand up here and get some experience because it's going to happen. We're developing a youth Board of Trustees as well. So don't, don't get used to your seats because these kids are coming for them. I do have a passion for working with the youth of Wellington. It has been an honor to serve the town and the board and especially the community for the last year. So welcome, I might have a hard time with your name and you might have a hard time with mine, so. We'll, we'll meet in the middle, but welcome everybody and reach out if you need anything or have any concerns or questions.
Good evening, Mayor, Trustees. So my name. My name is Dean Compost, Parks and Recreation Manager. So a little bit of what I do. So I oversee all of our sports leagues, all of our fitness classes, our contracted classes, what have you, anything in, in the recreation realm. I, I lead that. I have two assistant recreation coordinators and one, one full-time recreation coordinator. So three, three to run all of our, our sports leagues and, and events. Some of the some cool things that I think Patty mentioned earlier today is we did have some of our, our new equipment out for staff to enjoy. And I think that got some buzz this morning just because of how, how much was out there. So one of the big, big pieces of our mission is engagement. So we're going to be doing some events out there in the community to make sure we're engaging with, with our youth and then ultimately marketing to the parents to, to come and enjoy our programs and what have you. Another piece of my position here is I'm in charge of all of parks, roughly about 80 acres and about 10 place structures. And within that comes all the irrigation pieces, turf maintenance and what have you for all those specific areas. So in that, in that area, I have one technician, three who's solely in charge of irrigation and the two park technician twos who focus on turf maintenance and what have you. So some really cool things that we're working on right now. I'm the, I'm the liaison for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. We've come a long way since I first started. Some of the big projects that we have this year that they've helped kind of guide in terms of, you know, what the people want are from centennial, our centennial CIP projects. What we're going to be doing is removing those amenities that are at Centennial Park, reinvigorating that park with new structures, with new pieces. That, the Parks and Trails Master Plan, as Cody mentioned, we're going to be going through that process and I'm actually reapplying to a GOCO grant to seek those dollars to make sure that we're, we're going, we're going after all the funds that we can. Another really cool part of my job is I get to be a part of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board as a liaison and decide on park names. So that's something that will be on the agenda within the May meetings. But that's kind of it in a, in a snapshot. Spring and summer are usually our super busy season just because all irrigation's on. We want to get kids outside, all of our programs are going pretty strong. So it's going to be, it's already speeding up here. But if there's any questions that you might have and feedback, we love feedback in terms of, you know, what programs people are wanting or what have you. We're, we're open to that and, and to get things rolling as long as it's feasible. So a little bit about me in the department and I think. Thank you.
Thanks you guys for your patience tonight. I know this is a lot of information. We'll be getting with you, we need to get you business cards, those of you that are new business cards, we need to get you name tags. We order Town of Wellington shirts, things like that. So we'll have staff, I'll have staff get in touch with all of you because I know this sounds silly, but when I go to CML and I used to go with Windsor, we all wore matching shirts. Did they do, and it's just kind of fun. And then it's easy to find your people. It's really simple, it's like, oh, we're wearing red shirts today. No, we don't want red, but anyway, it's just an idea. I'll let the mayor decide if that's the direction he wants to go. The other thing that we'll do this year is do some headshots for the website. Mahala will be doing those with her new fancy camera that we ordered this year so she can be doing better. Instead of just using our camera phone for our public relations, we actually have a real camera now, which is kind of exciting, but we'll do some real headshots to get on the website. But we'll schedule all that so you can come dressed up ready and we'll do individual and then a group headshot, which will be kind of fun. So I know there's, I know there's a lot. If you have questions, things you're thinking of, please send them to me. And then if I can't answer them, I get, I filter them out to the rest of the team and we'll get it answered. When you ask a question, I will generally maybe rephrase it or just forward it out to the rest of the Board of Trustees with the response. So everybody's hearing the same information. That's one of my goals and something I've promised to the board is that I would be consistent with that, that, you know, for the most part, almost everything you ask me is something that would be of benefit to the rest of the board. There might be like a small piece of, you know, are we, what are we having for dinner tonight? I'm not going to send that information out, but you know, if it's, well, Ashley might want to know, Trustee McDonald wants to know. So that's just how we work. So do you have any questions right now? Awesome, okay. Well, take home your handbooks, let us know if you have any questions and we will see you next Tuesday. All right, thank you, thanks everyone, this will be a great time.